Get some food.
No rush.
All right.
This is the budget. So we've got just a rundown of where we're at and the notable items.
We're not focusing on any departments?
Not this time. It's kind of the general overview. And then we've got the notable items we could hit probably pretty quickly. And really hone in on wherever the board wants to go. Ready? All right. Should we? Mayor, do you mind opening the meeting? You're here and you go. All right, cool. All right. So good evening, everybody. I want to first start off by thanking the board for your time and the energy y'all put into this budget. I know we've met a little bit earlier. It's been a little bit harder to have more meetings, but I am grateful for y'all. I see every day, whether it's in phone conversations, conversations in person emails. Y'all really care, and so thank you. I want y'all to hear that. You don't hear that a lot, probably in your roles, but thank you. You're making a difference. With that being said, before we get into it, there's a couple of things I wanted to mention. There's a memo on the two items the board wanted us to add and get some costs on related to Blairmore Park, the playground safety fencing and the greenway safety fencing. So we've added that in there. So you've got a memo on that with analysis. I was also asked to show comparable tax rates of other jurisdictions. Now, I want to caution y'all. No two jurisdictions are like. They're like people. There's no apples to apples. It's only apples to oranges to plums to grapes to blueberries. Really, it's, everything's different. So you've got to take that within context, and we've tried to show y'all in that chart the tax rates. One might have different services, another might have a different tax base. There's a hose to changes, so just keep that in mind. Another mention, as we mentioned, we started early this year, so we haven't had all the costs. So we've gotten some updated costs that'll increase some of our expenditures for some dues, specifically with the league municipalities. That went up a little bit. Also, property and liability insurance coverage went up. And unfortunately, we had an error and omitted the liability coverage premium for police completely. So I apologize for that. The total amount we need to add to the budget for that is about $50,000 altogether. The silver lining, if there is some, is that even if you add that to the budget, we are still meeting the council's goals for spending cuts that y'all set. And so with that being said, that 50,000, it's not shown on the slides, but we can talk about it and I'll point it out. And staff's recommendation is to use fund balance to plug that gap. So with that being said, as we go through the budget, really, there's two options for the board. One is you say, hey, we like the budget. Let's move forward. The other option is, and the question you'll have to ask yourselves is, what in the recommended budget do we want to change? Right? So keep that in mind as we go through this. Yeah? Sure. No questions? They'll be in the, we've got something in here. We added that. We thought that might be a question, and so we've added that today, so. All right. So just a quick recap. So 24, this is the budget that we're in right now. You can see the total, 11.8. When we first started looking at the budget, 11, 4, 6, 1, that was about just under 3% below what our current amended budget is. Here's where our expenditures were at. Again, 2.9% less. You'll see, most departments are down. The ones that are up, public safety, that's just police personnel costs. Personnel cost are one of the primary drivers in our budget, and police has the most people, so that's why it went up. Sanitation, that's just based on our trash contract, the CPI, as well as public works. Operationally, that didn't go up. That's just plugging a 300 and some thousand dollar number in there from the capital program for HVAC repairs. And the $50,000 in contingency, that's sitting there for implementation with the pay and classification study. So we went through it earlier. Four options were proposed, and ultimately, the one that was chosen for staff to create a budget, this isn't something that you're absolutely married to, but it's what the board directed staff to create a budget on, was to do a three cent tax increase. The board felt uncomfortable with doing it all in one year. They felt like they wanted to be mindful of residents and their budgets. And so the three cents is what the board settled on. At the same time, in addition to the three cent, the board expanded on that and said, we also want to make sure that we're tightening our belts and we wanted to cut expenditures by at least $160,000. And at the same time, the board said, Alex, when you make those cuts, don't go to the point where you're going to reduce core services. Fill the rest with fund balance. That was the three-legged stool once the budget was created. So expenditures, you can say before, after. We cut about $218,500. We'll go through that, and you can see what exactly we cut. Now, again, we've got to add $50,000 for the insurance costs for police and other little things that added up. So that ends up being about $168,500 bucks we cut. So still within the $160,000 the board had set. And you can see here, in total, from the original start, it ends up being about 4.5%. Yes, sir. Absolutely. Absolutely. Yes, sir. Be glad to do that. So here are those expenditure decreases. You can see what that came from. Some of the stuff was just logical and made sense to do regardless. Some of the stuff was pushing things out into the future, and I'll, Stephen, I'll point that out as we go through this. So the first item that was pushed out was a public safety camera system. And this is becoming a more common practice. It puts cameras in the key intersections of town to, you know, relicense plates. So if you have a fugitive, if you have, you know, an Amber Alert or a child's kidnapped or something like that, it could help find them. So it's absolutely not something that we have to do, which is something that, from a policing perspective, we're seeing other places do. And that's been pushed out to the following years. That's not the total cost or some other ongoing costs to come with that, but that's the big cost. Also, the special services vehicle purchase. Instead of getting a patrol car as part of our cycle, we think we can do a special service vehicle purchase. And it's less outfit, basically. So we were able to cut 15,000. The K-9 replacement, we're able to speed that up and do that this fiscal year from, yes, sir.
What is a special service vehicle?
We've got the K-9 replacement, so we can do that that fiscal year, so we can naturally remove that. Fuel, we're hopeful that fuel costs won't go up dramatically, so we cut that. We also cut vehicle maintenance. We think we're hopeful that because we've followed our vehicle replacement program pretty strictly, that vehicle costs will be reduced. Now, there's always the possibility that we have some larger-than-expected vehicle maintenance costs or fuel costs in a year. If fuel costs go up, we would just come back into electric maintenance. Several things.
Do police cars have more?
I believe so. Yes, sir. So public works, Lawyer's Road, roundabout landscaping, can't do that because there's concrete in the middle. What I heard was that, hey, we don't want to do that. Let's put it aside. If we do want to beautify that intersection, the other way, we could come back to it. But for right now, that's cut. It is not pushed, it's cut. So going down here, public safety camera system, pushed. Vehicle 15K, cut. K-9, cut. Fuel, cut. Vehicle, cut. Lawyer's Road, landscaping, cut. Demo, this has been pushed out into the future. Two buildings. We actually think we may be able to utilize one of those buildings for storage, and we're going to need it if the scenario comes where we've got a tenant in that building. We've got some stuff that we're storing in there, and we need to find a new home for it. Then Parks and Rec. Yes, sir.
So where?
Yes, sir. We are able to make that purchase in the current fiscal year because we've got the funding available, partially from funds that are left over as well as insurance proceeds. Chief, keep me honest. Parks and Recreation, pushing out the resurfacing of the parking lot of Blairmore Park. That'll increase a little bit, but I've heard we may want to look at, especially if we start looking at, a master plan for that park. Want to create a large anchor park for the north side of town. We may want to do the master plan before we do a resurfacing because if we do that and something gets moved around for whatever reason, we don't want to spend something that we think is going to be there for 15, 20 years when it's going to get redone, so. Other thing is reduced, so that's pushed out, Stephen. And then this one, reduced Stallings Municipal Park sound equipment, 15,000. So the speakers, in order for all the speakers to work in the park, we budgeted for 30,000. That was going to be to get it right for the 50th anniversary. However, we're hopeful that we can get by with half of that, with 15,000. So we're still trying to do it. Let me just cut that out. So we looked at our expenditures. At the same time, we wanted to make sure that we were looking at our revenues too. Right, we started early. We're going to get more information. And we want to be conservative with our revenues. At the same time, we want to be not leaving money on the table and hurting ourselves by being silly. Right? So ad lorm taxes, that went up $966,000. Part of that is due to the three cent tax increase. Just as a walking-around number, one penny brings about $253,000. We also increased the tax collection rate from 96.6% to 98.5%. It's going to be growth, and it's also going to be an increase in the collection rate. Correct. We feel like, so I went back, and you've probably heard me talk about this past. We went back to the mid-2000s, well before the recession. Looked how it looked like before, our collection rate, what it looked like before the recession, during the recession, and after. And the lowest it ever got ultimately, what the town collected, was 99.35%. And that was 2009, during the worst of the recession. So we think that 98.5% is still being conservative. Still think it's being very conservative, honestly. And the reason why is because the county, as a local government, has tools to collect taxes, right? They can put your lien on your house, that kind of. Yes, sir. Nothing that we haven't already projected in there. This is above what it was at before, so some of that growth is already baked in. This is just what it was above since we came and showed it to you last. So the changes we made were because of the tax rate increase and also the collection rate. I think we could go up to 99% and still be conservative. Also, investment earnings. The board was wise in not wanting to look at and project that investment earnings three, four, or five years from now, right? We just can't project that far. But we can project for next year, and we feel that we're still being very conservative by increasing that $130,000. It's still going to be less than what we take in this year. Sales and use tax. We get a report each year from the NC League of Municipalities. They have revenue and finance experts that go and they look at all the variables that factor a lot of the revenue sources that we receive. And using that guidance, using local guidance, sales and use tax is going up $100,000 is what we're projecting. You'll see ARPA funding going down. That's not anything to be alarmed about. We were looking at the ARPA funding before. We were just looking at the first quarter numbers. Well, since then, we've reimbursed ourselves, and we'll reimburse ourselves for the second, third, and fourth quarter. So where you'll see that money is, it's going to be in our fund balance. So when you look at the fund balance, you'll see an increase in that. So this puts it all together, everything we talked about, the expenditures and the revenues. And you can see the cuts. Now, one question you may have is, Alex, we've got 11 million, over $11 million. Are you telling me we can't cut more? And the challenge with that right now, and why I don't think we can at least make significant cuts without cutting core services, is because a lot of our costs are fixed costs. A little less than half of our budget is just straight-up personnel costs. Things that we can't, you know, it's just there, right? As well as the trash contract, road maintenance, a lot of our costs. That's about three-quarters of our budget right there. A lot of our costs are fixed, they're baked in, they're necessary to the service. So that's why it was such a struggle even to get that low and going through all the budgets before. Even before we gave it to y'all last time, I asked our staff to go through and make cuts for them. And so that's why it's a struggle. Personnel costs, I feel like we're pretty lean. I think we're seeing symptoms of that now. The two most obvious ones are the audit that we got back. We've seen how much is relying on one person for, as a finance officer, has created a challenging situation for us, so there's no safety net. And finance is as important as anything we do, right? And frankly, even though we had findings in our audit, I think we got lucky for two primary reasons. The first is that we had somebody, Marcia, who had the know-how and capability and willingness to come in and fix it. We'd probably still be working on it now if that wasn't the case, paying outside contractors a lot of money. So that's the first reason I think we got lucky, frankly. The second way we got lucky is that with the board's support, we were able to find a really good, competent finance officer to come in fairly quickly, takes place. So I am worried about our finance situation, just having one full-time person in finance. And I do think it's a big concern, so I wanted to kind of point that out. I think the other thing that shows we're fairly lean is the fact that we did the staffing study for police, and it shows we need to add six more officers. So I say that not to say that we shouldn't go back and look at everything. By all means, let's do that. But I want to be an honest broker for y'all and say, I think that's where we're at. And really, kind of next step is that if we want to make further significant cuts to where we're going to bridge that budget deficit, I will help you do it, but it's going to be things that are very difficult and unpopular and things we're going to have to explore more. So several things, these are just examples. I don't mean them to sound ominous, although they might come across as that. First is, you know, we could reduce the number of police officers on a shift. Do that through staffing cuts. I would recommend doing that through attrition, not layoffs. The reason why is that won't take long. It's hard to keep and attract good police officers. And if you do layoffs, it's like dropping oil into water. Can't drink it. It messes with the vibe, the culture. People become distrustful. They start to wonder if they're next. If you've ever experienced a layoff, you know how that goes. The next thing that we could look at would be to decrease road maintenance. Really, that'd be kind of pushing the cost out into the future, right? We'd be, the roads would be depreciating quicker than the funding we would be putting back into it. So that would be kind of a short-term solution, if you will. We could look at the solid waste services. Are there any services we want to eliminate? Do we want to eliminate yard waste, recycling? Do we want to go from picking up trash every week to every other week or later? We've got a contract for this with waste connections. We'd have to work through and even figure out if that's possible. There might be some legal hurdles to that. But if that's what y'all want to do, that's something we probably could look at. And then finally, Parks and Rec. You know, you could look at pulling back events. You could eliminate the 50th, Stallings Fest. You could eliminate splash pad operations. So none of those feel good, they don't feel right. But I think it's my duty as a town manager to make you aware of all the options, kind of. Yes, sir. These right here. So. Okay. So Jesse, can you help me out with these, please? Last two columns. So that's the difference in the amount from the amended budget to the proposed budget. So this year's budget compared to what's in the proposed manager's budget, that's the difference. Does that help?
Yeah.
Let's keep on talking until. So 310 is the difference between, let me get back. I believe it's the amended budget here. And sorry, I should have made that clear. My apologies. Yep. It's all the different budget amendments that the board had. Oops, sorry. Correct. Yes, sir. Sorry, I should have made that clear. My apologies, sir. They're both relevant in the sense that this number is the change between, and keep me honest here, Jesse, this and this. And then this number is the difference between our current year budget. And the draft budget. I'm sorry, that wasn't clearly labeled. That's my fault, Brett. I apologize. So tax rate comparison, you can see that just for your consideration. Staff were asked about this, so I wanted to give it to you. But again, you've got to take that in. No two towns are the same, right? So just context, the spreadsheet you have and a hard copy in front of you. And you've got an electronic copy that was sent on Friday. It's got some of the key services that some of the places offer. So some places have fire departments, some places don't, some places do. Building and sections, some places don't. Some places have police departments, some places don't. So that's why, to use my fruit example, it's not apples to oranges. It's not apples to oranges to oranges either. It's apples to oranges to pears to plums to pick your favorite fruit. They're all different, just like people. We're all different. In amended budget, the way the amended budget is right now. So it's not actuals, it's the amended actual budget. Does that make sense? So it's not actual spending, it's what the budget is.
We're making the amendments because of?
Yes, sir. Typically, when you have a budget amendment, it's for a specific purpose, right? And it's going to get spent.
Are you able to cut it down?
So this is the difference between this year's, our draft budget, the recommended budget that's been submitted, and the fiscal year '24 current budget. So the number we cut when we came to the board and gave y'all a budget, and it wasn't fully developed, right? We gave you a budget. These are the proposals. This is what it looks like right now. The board said, great, Alex, we want you to cut it at least $160,000 more from the original fiscal year, from the original next year's budget. So the original budget that we gave y'all in fiscal year '25, which wasn't fully developed, to the recommended budget. In between those, the board asked us to take the original budget that we were using during the scenario planning and cut expenditures by at least $160,000. So that's where this number is, right here.
Well, I guess what I'm getting to is the form on the right, we're now saying, $560,000. All the amendments for 2024. Where's the $400,000?
Where are the cuts?
Yeah, or where did we have expenditures in 2024 that we don't need to have?
Here.
I'm trying to avoid the fold. We actually need to plan for this.
A lot of it is capital. You can see where we kind of pushed it back. Does that make sense? Here are the changes by department. We'd be happy to add, make a bigger chart and add that together. The reason we didn't do it, and it was probably a fallacy on my part, is I didn't want to give you too much information. But my assumption was wrong there. And let us add all those columns together in one big chart, and we can send it to y'all, and hopefully that'll make sense. Got it. Okay, thank you. One of the big things with transportation is we were redoing, as you know, we were redoing our, the, our process for doing road maintenance, right? And we were going from a just, a pretty rudimentary system of whatever the worst road is gets the funding to a more data-driven process. And it took time to do that. And so we didn't have a big road maintenance contract for one year, and it kind of bled over. So we basically, effectively had two big projects in one year. And so that's why you saw a jump in that. So I think that's what we're seeing. But no, there's, there's a healthy road resurfacing budget in there. The budget includes $1.25 million for road maintenance, that sets the goal. That meets the goal that the council had set, based on all the data that we've got, to where we'd be repairing our roads at a rate such that they weren't depreciating quicker than we would be fixing them. Good questions, y'all, please, can, I'm going to keep on going, but please, you know, pop up and ask any questions. So again, tax rate comparison for your information. But again, everybody isn't the same. Tax increase impact. So when we looked at that, we were looking at current market rate. And as we looked at it, we were like, wait a minute, we're not taxed based on market rate, right? We're taxed based on tax value. So what we did is we took average tax value, which is $296,860. We got that based on looking on the trash scrolls. And you can see, all right, how does that affect the average tax value? See here, the annual increase is about $89, a year, $89.06. We also put the monthly increase on here, because most folks have a mortgage, right? And your mortgage payment includes that monthly, or the monthly tax payment, even if it's not, even if it's only paid once a year, it's put in escrow, and then the escrow pays it at one time a year. But for most people, as long as you have a mortgage, that would be the impact for the average, $7.42. And if you're interested in the per penny, per penny amount, it's about $2.50 per penny. I don't know, I've talked to the, the manager, I, I think we're ahead of schedule as far as everybody else. So for your forecast, nothing especially new, right? It shows the same trend that we were looking at back in March, when we settled on the scenario for creating the budget. The three cent, it doesn't close the gap, but it stems the bleeding. But we still see a deficit in out years. And the big, one of the big reasons for that is, see the zeros, we lose the ARPA. That's correct, and that's a good point. So it sets up the board to make a decision. And that pushback is fair. The question for us was, what do you put the number at, right? And there's, there's two, there's two scenarios, right? It's the property valuations, we don't know what that'll be. And then also the rate, right? But good point, appreciate bringing that up. Okay, I'm going to keep on going unless anybody... So fund balance, you can see their total fund balance here, 23. See the change at here right now, at the end of the year. So the big reason for that is because of the ARPA funding, plugging that gap. The town has a, has a very healthy fund balance. Stormwater, stormwater is, is good news. The board increasing the rates for stormwater has really stabilized the fund, not just on paper in Excel spreadsheet, but also practically when it comes to services that we're offering. So you can see, we've got a healthy fund balance, we're able to knock out the projects that we need. This was added. I apologize, it's also in the budget message as well, a similar one, this one just hasn't updated one. It is. Jesse? No. It's, let me show you here. 338, 200, but we need to add $50,000 to that, is staff's recommendation, to cover those additional costs that we talked about at the very beginning of the presentation. Be three... Yeah, you sound like me. At 388, 200.
I'm like, I had it in my head, right, but I didn't come up with mine.
So what we're recommending is that additional $50,000. So you'll see $388,200. I'm going to keep moving, y'all pull me back if I want to stay here. Yes, sir. So notable items. So want to make sure y'all are aware of the kind of big picture stuff. So general government and debt service. You'll see $7,000 for the pay and classification study of the board. That's part of the board's strategic action plan for the past couple of years, as well as the pay and classification study implementation. $50,000 is a lot of money, but for a pay and classification study, that's a smaller amount. I'm hopeful that we're going to need that small, just that smaller amount. And the reason I say that is because the board has been very committed to following that pay policy. And there's two ways you can do that, right? You can wait and do a pay and classification study when things start to fall apart, you start to lose people, services start to suffer. And then you do a big increase to try to get things right. Or you can do smaller incremental increases over the years. And the board has chosen the latter. And so that's why I'm hopeful that amount will be sufficient. Sure, of course. Of course. Not a legal requirement, no, sir. 2018, I believe, 2019 range. Typically, I would recommend doing one every three to five years. But it, it's not something that we are legally obligated to do. What they do when they do them is they come in, they make sure all the job descriptions are right, and they look at the folks we would compete to, compete with for people if we lost, you know, somebody to such and such. And they bring up the salaries and the salary ranges to what's deemed a competitive rate for the market, a market rate. So that's what it is. I, not to my knowledge. We could... I would, I would caution us against doing that. We, we can, I'm trying to think. Would the purpose of doing that, would it be to get their data and not do the $7,000? So what they do also is they rewrite all the job descriptions that are specific to our, our positions here, right? Because what the town engineer, I'm going to pick on you, Kevin, for a second, does here, might be different from what the town engineer does in Matthews, for example. No, no, the, the $7,000 is the cost of the study. We actually got that number down, it was 13,000, I think, somewhere around there, when we did it before. Yes. The 50 is the implementation cost. Well, the study will say, hey, this position, you need to bring it up to this amount. This position's okay, this position's okay. This position, you need to bring that up to that amount, that kind of thing. Where the study identifies that the pay is below market, it brings up the pay for those particular positions to the competitive market rate. We don't know the cost of what it'll take to implement it. The $50,000 is a pool to implement those increases. That's salaries and benefits, if you will. So I'm hopeful that that will be enough, because we followed that pay and classification study, and it'll just be cleaning up a couple of things, right? But, yeah, $50,000 is, is for the implementation, based on what the study finds. That's right, yes, sir. Yeah, so what we do is we bring the consultant in, they would come, and they would identify the, you know, the cost, they would issue a report, they would come, they would talk to the board. And the board, we would ask the board to do a budget amendment to put the, move the money from the contingencies to the appropriate line items. So that's how it would work process-wise. Is that helpful in understanding what it is and how it works? Anybody looks at everybody, yeah. You could, and I've done it in the past with Wadesboro. I would caution y'all against doing that. And the reason why is internally, we're not experts at determining compensation. And it sounds easy, like you just look at the thing and you determine, oh, this person makes this, this person makes that. But there's a lot more to it that, you've got to see, all right, the town manager, even though we've got the same title, right? When you compare the town manager of Stallings versus the town manager of, say, Alba Ball, right? They run an electrical system. They have a fire department, right? And so even though we've got the same title, the populations might not be that different. I think you're going to lose efficiency if we do it internally. Because if we don't get it right, then it's, we're going to lose people. It'll affect, or we'll pay too much for something. Salaries are really sensitive, and they're, they're more difficult than they seem. And so bringing in an expert third party to do that is what we would recommend in order to get it right and make sure we don't give too much. At the same time, if y'all look at this and be like, Alex, do it in-house, I'll make it happen. If we want to get rid of that $7,000 number. I just don't think we're going to be able to rewrite the job descriptions effectively in-house. Or we can put it aside altogether, that's another option. We have job descriptions. Jobs change over the course of years, things develop, things get right. Not all of them, right? But just since twenty nineteen, we've had a myriad of different duties. Our accounting clerk has morphed into handling risk management and front desk. We've taken a different approach with our evidence custodian.
But again, I work at, if, if a person reports to me.
That's right, yes sir. It is, sir. It's in the budget, yeah. We would just do a budget amendment. It's the same thing, yes sir. That's right. The only thing we need to be careful of is that if we're, if we do this, the worst thing we can do isn't, don't do the study and not fund it. That's not the worst thing that could happen where you eliminate the seven and the fifty thousand, both of them. The worst thing we could do is do the study and not fund anything. Because then we're looking at, we're telling people, oh, by the way, you're, you make less than the market rate. It causes issues. So if we do the study, we need to. Yeah, turnover. Keeping good, attracting and keeping good people is usually cheaper than the cost of turnover. So. That's right. That's right, yes sir. Financial position, so this is read in conjunction to the planning position, the planning department. So I mentioned, I'm, I'm concerned about just having one person being full-time within finance. And really, the panacea is to add a full-time position, a full-time accountant, have them come in and have a backup, right? And redundancies in that. And I wanted to be, I didn't think the board would go for that. And I wanted to be sensitive to the fact that we're in the financial situation that we are. So we got together internally and we tried to get creative. Said, alright, how can we try to help add some redundancies within finance? And what this budget includes, and it's a cost of about fifty-six thousand dollars, is taking our accounting clerk and moving her back to where she has more time dedicated to the finance side of things. At the same time, we would be taking our current planning interim position, which is budgeted at about fifteen thousand dollars, and converting that into a full-time front desk planning tech position, which would fill in the front desk type role that our accounting clerk would be vacating. Because we can do it at a cheaper rate than hiring an accountant. At the same time, we've done about three hundred permits the past eight months. It's pretty time-intensive. It takes away our planner, our planning director, from focusing on more high-level stuff. We're small-town, we're gonna do it, we'll all roll up our hands and scrub a toilet if we need to. But just from an efficiency of investment in personnel, that would allow us to do some of the stuff that we were gonna outsource.
Can I stop you just a little bit?
Sure. Sure. So the planning tech is a, is a seasonal, short-term, part-time position?
So is that Stuart?
That is not, no. We've got an interim position, yes sir.
Okay.
And we've got one that's scheduled for the summer, but after that, you know, for next year, it would be converted to a full-time position. So that would be a full-time position. At the same time, it would allow us Max and Stuart to focus on, provided we are fully staffed, doing the bulk of the comprehensive land use plan and a new UDO, which is gonna be coming up in a couple of years at a cost of about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. It would allow us to do that work in-house, because it would free up their time to focus on that kind of thing. So it wouldn't cover the entire two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, but I think the bulk of it. You'd still have to pay for legal review costs, at least I would recommend it, you wouldn't have to. But I think it'd be smart to let Mac or Melanie review it. We didn't do that with our last ordinance, and I think it caused headaches for us in the long run. So. Fifty, it'd be fifty-six in total for the cost, plus the fifteen. So we'd be taking the existing money. And so it'd be the cost of converting that position, and our finance clerk would be taking on additional responsibilities, which is what you would, you see up here, the thirty-two-hundred bucks. That's right, that'd be the conversion cost and moving the accounting clerk, some additional cost for increasing her responsibilities. Yeah, it would, it would allow more staff time to create more redundancies for the finance department. So backing ups, doing extra checks, things like that. It wouldn't be a panacea for all the finance issues we have. That's hiring another person, this is kind of a, a compromise. That's right. Sure. So Marcia and Jesse, do y'all wanna, I can take a stab? So. Not the intern. That's right. Yeah, we, we don't know, it depends on what would happen, depends on the severity of it. The LGC can come in and kinda basically set ground rules and take over the town's finances, that's my understanding. So that's the ultimate, and you see that in places across the state. If they have repeated issues, then the LGC will, will come in and kinda take control of the town's finances.
So if we're on that list long enough.
If it gets a, that's the most severe option. I think in-between there would be additional letters, additional warnings, perhaps some additional barriers for, for taking out loans, things like that. It, it's hard to say because we're trying to protect a regulatory body and we, we just can't right now. But I think that's the, those are the potential steps of what it could be. Does that make sense, sir? Okay. Correct, yes sir. Yes sir. We'll, we'll get Mary more training, she's already started. Correct, yes sir. Yeah. Yeah. How do we hold ourselves accountable to that commitment? I think what we do is just maybe, just leave fifty thousand dollars in there in our capital improvement program for comp plan and UDO support, or whatever the number is. And adjust it and put it on the CIP, and then note it on the CIP in the comments. So that way, if none of us are here in five years, our successors will be able to pick that up and keep moving with that understanding. And that's, that's the comp plan and a new UDO. So we've got debt service payments, easy-peasy, and then. And then, I appreciate the way Jesse has the slide laid out. You can see the future ones coming up. And again, we'll monitor the rate that we're paying on that debt service versus the returns of investment and make sure that it, where our returns are higher than debt service. And if that changes, we'll come back to you and ask you, hey, maybe let's consider paying this loan off early. Several things, salary increases, $181,000. That's salary compression. You have that so that you don't, you aren't paying your new green folks that you're hiring in the same as your experienced folks. Then you have salary compression. You want to move people through the ranges. Otherwise, you have experienced people leave. Cola, so when we last talked about, this was 3.1%. We started earlier, and at the time, that was the November number. And we typically do December. We have that number now, and that's gone up a little bit, 3.4%. State mandated retirements. This is employer pension obligations. That's gone up a little, and with salary increases, that's at 71,000 townwide. Police, this is real, honestly, meat and potatoes type stuff. Okay, I'm sorry, Mayor.
That's all right.
Okay, I'll defer to you. Okay. Police, real meat and potato stuff. Under Chief Frank's leadership, we've been able to become more organized and methodical and thoughtful and proactive in planning out, hey, these are the things we're gonna need over the next five years. No, my, my mistake, sir. Central Hina does a good job. I think they've got a grant specialist on house, and they'll send out an email. Chief, do you get those emails from them? And they send out emails to all the towns, like, hey, these are the grants to be aware of. Future items, things that are in here. Graham, thanks for bringing up the R F I D system. We talked about the camera system. And then the staffing analysis, that's pushed off to next year for two additional officers. Our next generation cameras, they're live. That was just not like, not like I thought. Mayor, should we, should we move on? I feel like everybody's comfortable with this one. Okay. So transportation and planning and zoning. So transportation, this is pretty straightforward. $1.25 million for the road repairs. Sidewalk maintenance program for $50,000. That's aligned with our programmatic plans and the board's goals. The easiest decision we made during budget time was pushing out the gateway signage. And we looked, what's that?
Best one, too.
Yeah, good. Glad to hear it. Appreciate that feedback. We can remove it from the, the, the C I P if the board wants. It's left up here because what staff heard, what I heard, and I may have misheard, was that we like it, it's just too much. Maybe your cost will come down in the future, and the landscaping is done in the roundabout such that if we wanted it added in the future, it could easily be added. So, but if that's not something the board wants to do at all in the future, the board can absolutely remove that, sir. So no problem. We could even push it out further in the C I P because that's 25, 26. A year from now, we're going to be talking about that again. We could push it out a couple of years until after the reevaluation. And the, and I want to be clear, the, the cuts that we showed you didn't include this number. It was just on the C I P. Is that number? I, I remember we, we separated the C I P items. And I want to say that number isn't in the 3 million.
Yeah, less enhanced C I P items, 2.5.
Get back to that. I will. All right. Uh, we could get that number for you. Don't know off the top of my head. Make a note of that, please. Thank you. Yes, we have a sidewalk program. Several years before, we didn't have a policy other than basically somebody calls up there, and whoever calls, and we fix them, right? And what we found is that there were sidewalk issues, we thought, across town, but it was just going to the neighborhoods where people were the most vocal. And so now we have a sidewalk program where they're being evaluated. And Kevin actually is in the process of implementing that. Is there anything you want to add?
Green's have sidewalks.
We talked about the position and then a future item. Prior to the first time I brought you the budget, we pushed back the vehicle replacement for code enforcement. We had a larger repair recently. So there's always the possibility that if we have another repair, I might come to y'all and say, hey, we may want to replace this a little bit sooner. You know, we know when the repairs start getting more than the value of the truck. And we can, we can follow up, Brad, with something in writing because that's a big number. I get that. I get y'all wanting to look at that and make sure that it's justified, and we can follow up. Kevin, is there anything off the cuff that? Like actual resurfacing or preventative stuff, too?
Yeah, that's fine. The, the, my question is, how do we back?
And we'll, we'll make a note to follow up with a memo just explaining that so that... It's important. This is a big number, and y'all are going to get questions. It's like a, a bigger truck than any truck. They have so much stuff they carry around, whether it's picking up signs, tools.
I didn't realize.
Yeah. All right. Anybody, Mayor, comfortable with, everybody comfortable with these items? So the big takeaway is, I've got from this, the gateway signage, are we going to push, just push it out? Okay. Public Works, the big thing, just C I P item, H V A C upgrades. And then future items with stormwater, a truck, the dump bed. And then the demos, we're pushing that out. Any concerns with? Mayor, you good? That's what we're doing the design on right now, and we should be able to come back. That's just a placeholder number. That's redoing, making the H V C, H V A C upgrades in the town hall and public works. Not to read what's right there, but there are a host of issues. There was a poor design in, uh... in the town hall and Public Works, not to read what's right there, but there are a host of issues, there was a poor design in, uh...
That money go into the general fund?
Uh, it just wasn't spent, yeah. We budgeted for design, I think last year, is that right, this current year? And so that's what's ongoing, before that, we... And this may be what you're thinking of Stephen, and correct me if I'm wrong. We had put a no, a larger number like this in the budget, just saying, hey, there's something we, we know we need to do, we know it's gonna be a big project, it's kind of a placeholder. But as we got into it, it became clear, it was more complicated than we were initially thinking it would be. And we found out legally we had to do the design, so that's why we budgeted next year for the design. And then this next year is gonna be for the upgrades, that's a placeholder. You know, it'll depend on the outcome of what the designs are, the design results are, and ultimately the bids come back, so...
I could've swore that we...
I believe you're right, I believe we had, you had a big number several years ago. But then, it got pushed back, I want to say one time. And then we turned it into, alright, let's just do the design. And then the, then the next year we'll do, the actual upgrades, the actual work itself. And this is the number from the CIP. It was an expenditure, so there wasn't... It just, it didn't go anywhere. There wasn't any money spent on it, basically. So any money that would, would have been spent on it, is still there.
Yeah, it goes in the fund balance. I understand, I know it's an expenditure, but we budgeted for it, so...
Uh, yes, I'm at that. The big picture question is yes, the technical answer is expenditures don't go into fund balance. It's just the net at the end of the year, but I think the practical answer is yes, Jesse and Marcia's up.
I'm saying though, is this 331, should come out of the general?
Yeah, it's coming out of the general fund.
Already paid for it.
We have more than that budgeted from fund balance, so we can designate that to co, be coming from fund balance. You've got two sides of the ledger, right, they're not really connected, but...
So, so the 300 and some dollars?
What did we say, 388,500, I believe? Yeah, it's probably a good way to think about it, honestly, yeah.
I, I guess...
I mean, that's one of the reasons you have fund balance, right, is so you can, among other things, have it for one-off capital needs at times, if the board chooses.
My, my whole household budget had money set aside to replace the... If I didn't purchase an AC unit, it's not like I went, whoop, my money's just going over there. No, it's still in the, I'm gonna replace the AC unit.
Yeah.
So, I... Sometimes I feel like... Sometimes I just don't like the, uh, the way that we... Oh wow, we had extra a couple of years ago that went into fund balance. But we really didn't have, pump extra, we really just didn't spend the money.
Right.
So what should have happened is, we should have taken that out. Done in that one year.
What we can do is reserve, money in reserve for certain purposes, if we want to, that's an option, so... I can't remember, can you remember Kevin? I know y'all, y'all voted on the, the contract because it was over $20,000, I think. And, and there may be an amendment, forgive me, I can't remember, if there was a budget amendment, but... You remember?
30,000, 50,000, which was for the design, so that's what got approved, and then with this design will be an opinion of probable construction cost, and that one will come back and basically we'll have to bid it out, go, go through the whole, and then we would come back to see if council wants to move forward with. So, the design was approved, but it'll need to be approved before.
Alright, Eddie, Mayor, you good, everybody good with this? Okay. Parks and Recreation, um... So, we've got the replacement of the toddler playground, the last one. Got the Arbor replacement, this is all, for the most part, capital items. Replacing the, the sound system, we cut that from 30 to 15. The disc golf course, this is a grant. The...
How much is the grant?
It's 100%, sir, yes, sir, so it's 50 in, 50 out. Um, and then 50th anniversary, $20,000, the largest number will be the following year, that's just to get prepared. Future items, um...
How is that one? Because...
That's right, yeah, that'll be when the bulk of the, the celebration will be. Eunice, can you? So, these are the items that we pushed off, talked about those, an SUV and a Kubota utility vehicle, it's like a mule, a gator. And then, here are the items that the board wanted to bring up, these are the items that, in our current budget, we have leftover funds for. Um, I would ask these first two, would recommend that we move forward with those, just because that's kind of taking care of what we've already got. Um, we've got money left over to do that, the tennis and the pickleball court, and adding the fence back here, so... That's right. That's right. It is odd. It is odd, great. It is odd.
I would...
There's only $15,000 in the tennis and pickleball court, court repair, for the reasons that Eunice had identified. We need an additional $27,000 to make those repairs. These items are not in the budget, but we have leftover funds from the Blair Mill Park Greenway project that we could use on these other things, so...
It was just part of what made up that budget. Trying to understand here, it's like, if you have a line item that's in the budget, but to...
Yeah.
But you decide that maybe we don't need that, we'll...
No, we can make internal, interdepartment transfers. We cannot spend money above $20,000 without getting council approval. I can't move money from the police department to the park department. I can't move money...
This was Parks and Rec to Parks and Rec, right?
That's right. These items are above $20,000. As far as the pickleball court and the municipal, uh, park, so that's why we had to come back and ask the board. And also, I, I don't want to, just as like a, a trust issue, I wouldn't feel comfortable with saying, hey, we had all this money left over from the Greenway project, and be like, oh, by the way, I spent all this money on all this other stuff, right? I want us to be all on the same page, between me and Eunice and the council, let's all get together and figure out the right plan. So, part of that is the $20,000 threshold, but I guess the practical thing is just having a conversation as a team here and figuring it out, the best solution and building trust.
My personal opinion is probably... About the disc golf. There are people who are waiting every hour to get on.
Okay, it's a big bold statement, you don't need to argue about it. It's a lot of neat facilities that are well-used, and that's one of them.
That's great.
I'm for the tennis ball, tennis, pickleball, sorry. I also see about this one.
It's a liability.
Tennis pickleball court.
Sure. Mayor, can we take a five-minute break, so we can use the bathroom, appreciate it.
I'm trying to be, I mean, y'all know, hey, I, I'm spending money like it's going out of style, I'm trying to be nice. I agree with the fence.
Get it done now, so that, this looks a little tricky about this stuff, the tennis and pickleball courts were really creeping us up. The court fence, yeah, new sign, yeah. It has a little bit of a funky time on it. One way to take it, it takes about a month. They're gonna have it down to that. Ideally, you know, awesome, then I have it down like a little bit, or in the, in here, so I'm like... We do have a price for that, but it's not represented up there. Black representative with some wind screens. It would be awesome, but maybe one day, for the fence, you know it's not the prettiest, but it's still doing its job, you know, there's no missing pieces. All his balls are grown. You need a ceiling.
A lot of that fence you're talking about, you're talking about the fence around me. That's not part of that.
No.
Yeah, I support saving fines. Say thirty thousand.
I feel like we would have a consensus.
It was four, a hundred fifty?
I really think the park fence, the park fence back. So that's where... One thing I have a question on is that park signs before the reasonable items, permanent temporary, is that we saw at some point if not before, and so we didn't want to spend the money there. Are we thinking that that's going to be so far into the future now that it's comfortable to do that? Or is that sign designed such that it can be?
It can be moved. Yes, sir, absolutely.
We're all leaning, we're not, we're kind of leaning toward doing it.
When we get back to it.
Mayor, you got any trips coming up? Got any trips coming up? Yes, sir, yes, sir, tomorrow morning work. Or I could do, honestly, Friday works. Both are equal, so if you want to do more, more. Okay. Sounds good. That'd be great, thank you. I know it's a time commitment for you. Appreciate it. Good, thank you. I want it.
What, like they burned the place down? They caused a fire?
That's always been my unknown question.
All right, let's go, we're almost through with Alex's presentation.
All right, did I hear correctly? It sounds like there's a consensus. The items for the upcoming budget, everybody's good with what's on here. What I heard for the current year's budget with the leftover Greenway funds is that it sounds like there's a consensus to do the pickleball court repair, the municipal park replacing the back fence, the municipal park new signage, not the master plan. And then we wanted to discuss these two items. Is that it? Everybody in agreement there? Of course.
I know that Unis had a gentleman join the Parks and Rec committee. He spoke about potentially or take legs.
Have you ever looked at sponsorships for events?
Do you have any sponsorship? However, we've not looked into tennis court.
All filled with. Also thinking for a fiftieth.
That's definitely...
B and A base in Charlotte.
Well, they don't have a branch either, here.
Definitely in the works, that's why we kind of dipped our toe in. And I definitely think however, um...
Hospital would be awesome.
Yeah, they're interesting. It's surprising, um, but not as exciting. Because they're out of town, so... Um, they sponsored Stone Fest where the hospital's built. And then after that, they, um, don't want to, don't make fun. They'd rather go with volunteers or have a big space. So that'd be, that'd be... Um, he's a porn, I'd like to talk to Sean. Mr. May, whoever you got, um, more than half...
If you were listening, you'd be able to like jump on it. Something like... Sign.
Yeah, we have some of the sign.
Presenting sponsor park.
Yeah, I do want to...
They also say that you don't recommend it.
Yeah, I can kind of dive into that, so it should be two thousand up there. However, that three thousand number with the idea of a bollard option, however. It was brought to our attention, this safety fencing. I have a photo on y'all's memo, that is from East John Street. No, no photo creds to me on that. I didn't take that picture. However, go to the next page, I'll take props for that one. So, what we did is kind of went out there, looked at the area, reached out to our Greenway engineers. They do not recommend this type of fencing, just with the slope, our Greenway kind of goes up when you reach the Hawk Signal. There's safety signage they already put there. We do already have a bollard on site. They did this so we could get emergency vehicles back there, think of the fire truck, police truck. We also can get landscaping out there currently. Out there if they need to. I will say, I did talk to Chief Johnny White at the immigration. He did say, we do something like this fencing. We want to think like that, if there is that would be...
It's uphill to the road, Brad. Up, up to the road, like the road's here and you go up to get there.
I think there's some other options we could explore. You know, if you drive off the side of the highway and, you know, your car tire goes off-road and you get a little bit of a jolt, that's something we could look into. And I'm not saying we can't do this fencing, that is not what I'm saying at all. However, it will be a challenge for me to think about. Not me saying no, however, we're going to run into some challenges. With, did your... For the East John Street?
Yeah, and if it can burn, perhaps maybe...
Yeah, it's more of like a retaining wall.
This is, I'm not proposing anything except for...
So that's what the Greenway is designed for. But we worked, we thought it was something you could do. Greenway essentially would actually put two of the bollards there. It's not the one that works that. That way, it would match what you guys already have out there. That is the three grand here. However, all those bollards would be compatible. However, you know, if you do it that way, I will say we probably prohibit the topper. It would give access to more to vehicles, we could get landscaping back here. It's really up to you guys to try and see out here.
Okay, well, let us get some bollard prices and we'll come back up. Yeah. So, let me summarize. I think the stuff in the budget, everybody was good with. For the current year's budget, tennis pickleball court repair, yes. Stallings Municipal Park replace back fence, yes. Stallings Municipal Park new signage, yes. Master amendment for Blair Mill Park, no. Uh, Blair Mill Park safety fencing crossing, come back with bollard. I got bollard information. All these are, I think are proposed. The red were the ones that staff proposed and these are the ones that the council wanted to get information on. No, a bollard's like, like that thick. I think the challenge is because this is right now closed off, making it so that maintenance and emergency vehicles can get back in there too. I will say it's, it goes uphill to the street. So that, I think that'd slow down a probably toddler. Slow down my five-year-old, but he's, can be lazy at times. I know there's kids that are a lot more energetic. All right. Is everybody good? Everybody good with the items as we discussed them? Okay. Stormwater, um, this is a good news story. Stormwater, the board increased rates. They talked about potentially increasing them this year. I would advise the board not to increase stormwater rates this year. We've been able to knock out basically all our major projects. Exception of Twin Pines, but that project is under design. And this forty thousand dollar number right here, two hundred and fifty thousand, that four hundred thousand is penciled in for the Twin Pines project. Um, we've been able to knock out our projects. We're in the middle of a pilot period where we're doing more work in-house. It's been wildly successful. We've saved a good amount of money and we're going to continue towards that. When you look at, it's just a lot more, a lot cheaper to do it in-house versus contracting out all these stormwater repair jobs. Seventy thousand is for stormwater maintenance, that's just kind of more proactive stuff, cleaning pipes. Fifty thousand is to support MS four permit compliance. We were out of compliance several years ago. Kevin's team have gotten us back into compliance. That's just to kind of support them. There's a lot of standards, federal, state standards that we have to meet. And then street sweeping, uh, doing that once a year and street sweeping the entire town. Again, Matt, can y'all, let's not raise rates this year. And we pushed out a, a truck purchase. Uh, we want to give it a little bit more time, uh, to really make sure that, yes, that it wasn't a one-year anomaly. We're going to continue to save money doing things in-house. Um, any questions or concerns, Stormwater Fund? Well, that really concludes the budget. Again, where we're at now, really the ultimate question is, what do we want to change in the recommended budget? Staff are recommending added that fifty thousand dollars to cover the liability insurance. But if I heard correctly, just looking at this, the biggest thing, it sounds like overall, we want to kind of keep it the same. Is that... Okay, sure, yes, sir. People aren't going to have less trash, right? People aren't gonna have less trash, right?
Look at the, the, the increasing number of, of events, you know, we use. How many people attend all your events? Question I did have, Officer Incendiary. I noticed the year-to-date, I think it's like. Every year's.
Watch shirts of three.
A lot of things that are. Thousand-dollar line item. Building ground. We had a meeting though.
I'd counter you.
Please, yeah, that's fine.
And say that there is absolutely nothing in here other than people. Priorities. That, that is a short-term game, long-term. Everybody here is already shut down, I mean, here's a piece of property over here. We have no forethought of. It's all keep the wheels on. Which, which is fine, that, don't get me wrong, that's fine if that's what we want to do. Me personally, I don't really want to just keep the, I want to be able to say that we made some goals towards long-term.
Keeping the tax rate the same.
My concern is that this budget does not necessarily. Money not in this budget because we're not. When I say goals, I'm just looking at things that we want to do. Whatever that may be. I mean, there are a few things in here. I mean, that's my only, that's my only concern is that this budget. Three dollars for really. Fine, that's what we want to do. I mean. ARCA went down, fund balance.
That's really what you need.
So, so the reality is, is that. Not really putting a million dollars in fund balance. Looks like it, but we're losing. ARCA funds put in back.
That moved the needle. It's an in and out. You'll see it, you'll see it, it's gone actually. Right, exactly. ARCA funds went down. There are savings there, yes. The savings are. I say that closed out completely for the. Up with daily payables going cashes. So, um, you know. I think we're both educated enough to be a yes. But, you know, but, um, you know, it's, it was a yes.
Now you're good.
Yes, now you're good, yes.
That's why we've got these trends, you know?
Take that money and even do it. And sixty percent.
I think we did fifty percent.
And that wouldn't be, I mean, it's probably not going to be a concurter, I mean, if you have a fifty percent increase in your tax base. That's what I said, I thought. Higher tax rate kind of helps you. Just next year, you're gonna have that on top of losing all your.
But we have more information.
Have to raise on this year if we go fifty percent? You don't have to raise it.
Again, if you, if you look at the numbers, here's the fact of looking at the numbers and it's not anybody's fault. Same as this year. Those numbers.
Everything, everything, just say it's exactly the same. Have to raise taxes next.
If you're gonna use fund balance, yes. That is, that's a similar question. If, if there's a return on that, yeah. When will we see revenue men from a rental? I don't want to be argumentative, I just have always had this question of us.
Signed, the twenty percent reserve. So.
So. I was supported. I, my proposal for mine. I, the way I rationalize it. So. My taxes are going up. Why, where am I? Have to have one. I would be fine with going up to a million. It looks like. Raise three percent, but I think if you don't raise it three percent. Three cents, yes. I, I thought that it was, it's only raising six hundred thousand? Really, a million might actually cover. Not raising taxes and then I know. I'd be fine with going up to a million.
Balance was way higher than this.
Pull it up now, if you want.
There's another unknown, that is. Actually have to do some capital investment.
I would try to, I, I think just long term. This is right, really. The amount of fund balance we have, it's important to have a good fund balance, right? So you can weather bad times, you can, you can take advantage of opportunities when they arise. If you have a recession, you can plug it with fund balance without having to raise taxes during a recession, keep services going, right? And looking at our fund balance numbers, you've got enough to where you could take that and you could use it for projects, right? On the CIP or whatever y'all deem appropriate to benefit the public, whether it's building out greenways, investing in downtown, whatever. Problem that I'm most concerned about as the town manager is the trends that we see, right? When you see those trends moving into the future with our revenues and our expenditures, they get big really quick. And so. If we can solve that deficit, you've got that fund balance, really. Really do some cool stuff, right? Or do whatever y'all want, right? We'll still maintain the reserves. The worrisome part is just the trends that we're seeing in the future where that budget deficit. Gets bigger and bigger, even with that three cent tax increase. So, it's just a question of, do you want to do it maybe all in one year? Or, do you want to kind of moderate it over several years? With that being said, we don't know all the things about projections, the concerns, we don't, we don't have a crystal ball, we're just guess.
Yeah, we can. All the other areas are the same. And the.
Cue whoever pulled this up. I didn't even see ya. If you were a snake, you would have bit me. Alright, so. Let's see, what do we want to look at, increasing property? Marshall, Jesse, can you come up and do this? I, I want to, I want to be able to watch this. Thank you, Marshall.
I just want to make sure that, um, there's nothing else in here, okay? The tax rates, that, there's that personal property. I don't know what you wanted me to do, I'm sorry. Or just put one point six, what did you? Well, no, it's only going to be fifty percent times point five, not one point five. Throw a point five.
No, because then you're having.
Well, the base is already in it. I'm like, that's way too much. I'm thinking that's, that's, yeah.
Oh yeah, sorry.
So.
Could do it then, like.
Seven two million dollars is being our increase in taxes.
Basically, with sixty percent. Probably going to be a brown.
Multiplying this, it's the tax rate and gives you. Tax, this is the, the, what our current tax base is.
I think the point was. Yeah, I mean, next year, if you don't have the art with funds. I mean, you could, I mean, you could do it if we get enough eval.
Whatever, E. County. Oh. Oh, right. But you would think west would go up a bit more. Long-term trends, you've got this budget. We get out of control, okay? Tax increase, that's what it looks like. That three cent tax increase is still big. And seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Problems that I have with this budget is that large expenditures that we know are coming in the future. We're not doing anything in the budget. We are. Exactly what we can do. Because that's, that's not really legal, right? Not supposed to be dumping money. Supposed to be breaking even with the budget. Keep me honest, legally, we're supposed to be, we're supposed to be trying to break even every year.
Yeah, you have to balance it, you could, you can balance it with fund balance, though.
You can balance it with fund balance, okay, okay.
It's just, you know, math, you would run out of fund balance eventually, right?
See, I'll disagree with you as far as. That's not fixed income. I'll look at the bigger picture.
My district is probably the poorest district in our area.
The ex-mayor of, uh.
I've been told many times by. Because they came from. They would be okay paying more taxes.
And everybody that watched me, they're okay. Alright, what can we do?
We're trying to get this done.
I guess the question is.
Budget numbers.
So what I'm hearing is that the budget as a whole is good, it's just figuring out how to plug. That revenue, whether it be fund balance or the three cent tax increase for this current year. That's the outstanding issue. Right, sure. Okay. I don't know if there were any changes other than the fifty thousand dollars we're recommending. For the, uh. For the insurance costs. Okay, for the, for the. Yeah, we can follow. Alright, so the big thing, May twentieth meeting. Really, the big issue is. Whether to fund from fund balance. Or tax increase, or a combination. And then, uh, will, uh. The budget largely stays the same until then. Is that fair to say? I want to make sure I'm answering everybody's questions. And we'll follow up with a report, just memorializing the decision. For those three items with the, with the, uh, with the parks in the current budget. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Alright, can I get a motion to adjourn? Alright, thank you, Alex.